I think I need a package.
Not if the, not if it was.
All right, we'll call the meeting of order of the Evendale Council and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk will call the roll.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Here.
Mr. Putoff.
Here.
Mr. Sextro.
Here.
Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Ms. McDaniel.
Here.
Mr. Aubrey.
Here.
First, we will have an ordinance, a hiring ordinance to cover. It's ordinance 21 dash 2037. I ask for permission to read it by title only.
Still moved.
Second. Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. Smi-, or Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
They have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
Still move.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey.
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
Still move.
Second.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
I mean, I mean, Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey.
Yes.
An ordinance approving the hiring and appointing of Andrew J. Schramm as a police officer of the Village of Evendale and declaring it as an emergency. They have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
Still moved.
Second. Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
And now declare ordinance 21 dash 37 adopted as an emergency. Okay. Will the applicant step forward, please? If you raise your right hand. I, Andrew J. Schramm.
I, Andrew J. Schramm.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
And I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the Village of Evendale, Ohio.
And that I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of the Village of Evendale.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Introduce your family that's here.
Yes, with me is my girlfriend, Amy, my mom, Mary Beth, my dad, Kevin, my sister, Ashley, my brother, Adam, and a good family friend, Dave.
Okay. You need to sign the ordinances here.
Mayor, Council, everyone here has been around long enough to know that it is tradition to have a family member present, a new officer with the first badge, so Mayor, that's a privilege of presenting Andrew's first badge.
Okay. The minutes have been previously distributed. You're welcome to stay for the festivities.
Well said.
They didn't hesitate.
Yeah, well, you weren't even done.
He hasn't even gotten his first paycheck. Somebody's out there looking for your parking place.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Okay, the minutes have been previously distributed. Are there any additions, corrections, or changes? If not, can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Still move.
Second.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey.
Yes.
Mr., Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Minutes are therefore accepted. Now we'll go to reports of committees, and first is finance report.
Mayor, May 2021, over last year, we were up 17,000, almost 18,000. However, everyone will recall, this May was actually the traditional April, when we expected greater revenues than normal because of kicking back the filing date. So it is a, although it's higher than last year, it is disappointing that it was not greater, because we were hoping that where April took a dip, we were hoping to pick it up here in May, and it did not quite happen. The good news, or at least the less negative news, is that receipts over, over expenses are still up for the year about $730,000. So we're still positive, but just not where we wanted to be. Recreation, as everybody can see, the swim team is up and running. They actually have 200 swimmers this year, which is getting close to normal numbers. The pool operations will return to normal this season. Everybody's been kind of waiting to see what that new protocol would be. It will be back to normal operations. Blood drive will be on June 22nd, so everybody can mark their calendar for the blood drive coming up in, I guess, next week. And there will be four concerts are scheduled at the Pavilion. One of them is the, will be at the Chili Lunch, I guess it's next Wednesday.
Two weeks.
The Gorman Farm, just remind everybody again, row by row, scheduled for August 21st. Sunflower Festival scheduled October 2nd and 3rd. The UAW building is now, that transfer, that sale has closed. The building is now known as Soil and Stars. See that new sign going up?
That's interesting.
And just to remind everybody that the farm has chicken, beef, turkey, a lot of produce that if you're interested, either stop by or call in for an order. A lot of it is by order. Lastly, Service Department, the VTAP stage, the Bell Tower Pavilion is, that project is now complete. That's been going on for a while. We see Jurgensen out on the highway, working on 75, at least if you're there in the evening or late at night, they're completing their phase of the work on the, that part of 75. I know it was in your newsletter, Mayor, the towers at I-75 are now complete, and this morning, I guess they finally cleared the rest of the barricades, and that Glendale-Milford Road across 75 is now open for full traffic. With that, the other part of Glendale-Milford Road is closed. So you, you open up one side and you open, and you close down the other. So just to remind everybody, for the next essentially three months, the ability to go up Glendale-Milford Road will be restricted to only those living there, and speaking to Mr. Putoff, even those who live there. It's not going to be easy.
Little frustrating. I do have a concern, though, and maybe, I don't know, Chief, if you can answer, Neil, if you can answer the, this question. What are they doing about, about ambulances and that? Is, are they all diverting somewhere else, or have they been coming through? Oh.
Hamilton County Communications has been notified and they are telling you that they're going to do the work, like, or.
Because I haven't seen any goes through.
One went through this afternoon.
Maybe, maybe one.
Yeah, one went through this afternoon, and if it's a dire emergency, they're pulling straighter. And so we've met with Duke and they've got a plan, I'm sure they can.
Yeah, part of, part of the maintenance and traffic plan for the project is to maintain a one lane for emergency use. Basically, it's, it's, they have flaggers set up at 24/7 at both ends of the project so that if they witness an ambulance coming up with lights and sirens, they are to basically clear the barricades in order to try and get them through, so.
You have, you have regular communication with them?
I have it every day.
At least remind them that they should make it as easy as possible on the residents that live between those two.
Bill, a lot of this is going to be the first couple of weeks.
I'm very frustrated.
It's going to be a little bit.
I understand that, but it's still a point where you still have a number of people that
bypass 17 signs in both directions, basically telling them that it's closed, and they get up there and they stop, and they want to know what to do next.
I understand.
And, and so, I understand.
For the people that live there.
For the residents that live there, it's going to be frustrating, because you're going to be going back and forth, but you, you're going to have, that delay is going to occur.
The other thing that I'd like to request is their work is supposed to be being done between 7A and 7P, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I see no reason for the spotlights and the, the port-alet, the spotlights at the port-alets. I understand the ones at the very ends where they have people manning them all night, but the two with the generators running in the middle don't need to be on, and they don't need, nobody's using them, they have no personnel in between those two areas. The only people that they have are on the very ends, and they each have a spotlighted port-alet at the end. So that additional noise and light is not necessary, and it's, it's a disturbance to the residents.
The effort is making those.
I'm sorry, I'm a little wound up today.
No, no, no.
I have a few frustrations, but, but hopefully we can work through them. I, I've been trying to make friends with the guys at the end and just, just make the best of the situation.
Chief Cordy was basically on duty, off-duty patrol yesterday. We noticed some issues that we brought to the Duke and contractor's attention, so.
And I think, I, in all fairness, from this morning to this afternoon, I saw some additional signage that makes things a little clearer up, up toward the upper end, and, and I, and I hope that, that helps with, you know, with the flow up there.
As you've known, we've put signs up for no truck traffic for how many years?
I, I know.
And they ignore the signs. I, I mean, we can put as many signs as up there, and we've seen it. We've watched people early blow through Reading Road, they come up there, they pass a half a dozen signs, and they get up to the top and they dead stop at Sherrandale. Okay, now what am I supposed to do?
Chief, I have noticed we haven't had any trucks.
No, I saw one today.
Oh!
I passed him as he was coming up.
I didn't see him.
Going down the hill, he was coming up the hill, I was like, ooh, wonder how he's going to get turned around.
Well, he turned around without a ticket and two police officers.
Mayor, I have nothing further.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the finance chairman? If not, we'll go to the police and fire.
Okay. Just as a reminder, we're about to, or we're continuing with our promotional process for captains and, and lieutenants. Testing occurred last week. Assessment process occurs this week. The hiring committee is interviewing for the captain's position on the 21st, for the lieutenant's position on the 23rd. Also, we started, started the process of advertising for the vacancy that's going to be created through those promotions, and hope to have that process completed in August. In the hiring committee, we have not scheduled a date yet, but we're looking at late July, early August for the committee to meet for the, for the vacancy that's created at the firefighter pyramidic level. The Chili Luncheon was mentioned again, I think that's next Wednesday. Pre-orders are required. Also, Hamilton County Public Health will be here with the mobile vaccination unit at that time next week. And fire hydrant maintenance will occur this summer, so you'll see painting and water. Don't be concerned. And last for the fire, but not least, is that COVID, there are zero active cases in the Village of Evendale. Yes. And just as a matter of perspective, so I'll be pulling back the reporting, because restrictions have been listed, the county status, you know, has changed, but we got a report that let us know for the zip code now. This is the zip code, not the Village of Evendale. Near the end of April, 51% of the zip code have been vaccinated, so hopefully we've made more progress since then. Okay. Think everybody knows this, the other side of councilman Putoff, Glendale-Milford closed issue, is that the traffic has been diverted to Cooper Road, and you can tell. And traffic's going to be monitored for anybody who's really not paying attention, or didn't listen to the first part of this discussion, so be aware. Also, we're looking at traffic flow and enforcement here within the municipal property, so just want to make everybody aware of that. And then, as, if you remember last year, we did a policy review of the use of force for the police department. We're going to do a year later look and see, and given some other things that have happened in the country, where we stand now, we're going to do that in August. Cultural Arts did a great fine arts exhibit that ran from April 30th until May 2nd. Over 250 people registered to attend, and then next year will be our 20th anniversary. When Susan said this at the committee, I could not believe it, it had been 20 years for cultural arts. So that planning is starting now. Of the made wine tastings sold out at Gorman Heritage Farm. You've already heard Councilman Auburn speak to the fact that the state, the Bell Tower stage project has been completed, and there were, tri-county players had several performances of inspectors calls and inspector calls on the new stage, as well as a Tippy Toes Spring Dance recital was held there, so it got completed, we started using it, that was the point. Okay, and then in the building planning and zoning area, let me start first with the code enforcement. It was a busy month for high grass violations. We, you should know, or all of council should be aware, the situation with village crossings ended up being that we had it cut, and we are billing the owner for that, but hopefully we will have everything under control now going forward. And, let's see, I guess that there are a couple of ordinances, I, I think it was last council meeting when we took the pool cover ordinance off the agenda, it's going to be discussed in Planning Commission, as well as an ordinance talking about discount retail and self-storage. And then we got awarded the grant for electric car charging stations, which is a reimbursable grant, and we were under the impression that we could do it at our ti, on our own time deadline. However, the Ohio EPA is asking us to accept the grant on June 15th, and that's why you're seeing an ordinance about transferring some funds, because we have to do that now. We're going to have a third reading on the building fee structure report, I mean, the building fee structure ordinance, and that concludes our report. Questions?
Any questions?
I do have a question, and maybe it's better for Andrew regarding across the street. They mowed the lawn, but everything else is looking pretty shoddy, and whether we're, what type of response did we get when we notified the owner of that property, or are they just completely ignoring the situation? Because the bushes, I mean, all the way down to the corner at Walgreens, it's just it's overgrown, it just looks like it's been deserted.
Sure.
But for the lawn being, or the grass being mowed, and what we're doing about that.
So, Mr. Aubrey, to answer your question, when the, just to kind of maybe go back to how it was maintained under the prior owner, so prior to this new owner coming on board, they're an outfit out of Maryland, there was one maintenance company that maintained the entire property. So that goes all the way from the Reading roadside, all around the corner, all the way up to almost Kingsport. So there was one company that would do all of that management, and then each of the individual property owners would pay the owner of Village Crossing, the, the larger shopping center, they kind of organized it, so everyone would pay sort of their fair share into the pot to pay for all that maintenance. That's why when you'd see crews out there cutting and maintaining, they would be all doing it at the exact same time. It wouldn't be sort of this piecemeal approach. Well, unfortunately, what happened when the shopping center came under new ownership, they essentially canceled that contract outright. So then every owner was left holding the bag to maintain their own individual property, which is why you saw some inconsistencies with the way things are, are being maintained out there. It's my understanding that the new shopping center owner is going to be hiring someone local to maintain the property on a more regular basis. Right now, their outfit is out of Cleveland, so to, to say the least, they're having a hard time finding somebody here locally to take over that maintenance responsibility. In addition, just generally speaking, a lot of these contractors are having difficulty finding folks to do the work to begin with. So that's why you're seeing a little bit of struggle going on over there as far as the maintenance is, is concerned. Walgreens has contracted with Jeffrey Allen, who does our, the maintenance of our islands there in Reading Road, so you will hopefully be seeing much better improvement in their specific property. And it's my understanding that the shopping center is looking to hire someone locally as well, in addition to Equity, who owns the vacant lot south of Walgreens, which is the one we had to have cut. So it's my understanding, all of this is starting to kind of come together a little bit more, so you hopefully will see some improvements out there. Keeping in mind that, again, our property maintenance code has a bare minimum level that folks are expected to adhere to. Sometimes the preference is not, doesn't, it may go above and beyond what's necessarily required at that minimal level. So we, we have to make sure that we're obviously treating them equally as far as what the expectation is, even though, given the fact that it's a very prominent location within our community. But it is stressed to them, the prominence dictates a higher level of, and a more regular maintenance schedule. So that's been emphasized, to say the least. And given the fact that we've already had to cut one of the lots, I would hope that would be a, some motivation to do it better in the future.
I suggest if you go into Walgreens, you get the manager, he's been there for some time, and you just say to him, boy, the maintenance of your property is looking terrible, when is it going to improve? And I've done that to him. I, if more people do that to him, maybe the word gets back to the home office.
And I'm happy to provide contact information for the ownership of Walgreens, Village Crossings, and the, the vacant lot that Equity is maintaining. And certainly, any, anybody who wishes to contact them, I would certainly welcome that additional motivation.
My understanding is that the Walgreens property is owned by an individual who, who is required, is responsible for most of the maintenance on the property.
Correct.
And, I mean, not that they don't have a say in making sure it, it gets taken care of, so that, you know, it could, it could go the right direction, but you can also contact, Walgreens District Office is, you know, there's a district office here locally too, which probably has more, more pull on individual stores in this market than.
Sounds like they already have their problem solved if they already hired Jeffrey Allen.
To a certain degree, yes. You've noticed that they've been out there sort of cleaning up the area right there, kind of near their sign, and a little bit behind the sign.
It's the other that we have to.
Right, right. So again, and it's also, I think, I mean, Jeffrey Allen's had a hard time finding folks, and I think some of these other contractors are having a hard time finding folks as well, so, and that's just kind of the reality of the beast right now.
Walgreens is the worst looking on the corner.
Of the four corners.
The other three look pretty good.
Yeah.
And then you look through the, as I'm sitting there at the light, and I look to my left, and it looks terrible.
Okay.
Sure.
Go look for improvement.
Very well.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, that'll be the. Okay, that'll be the police and fire report. I have a few things. I want to remind council that our next pre-council meetings between the 4:30 meeting and the 6 o'clock meeting, we have a 5:30 meeting to discuss, of the joint council, to discuss the Rynx property again. It's an open meeting, it's not an executive session, anybody is quite welcome to attend and talk about it, but I want to remind you, it's the next pre-council meeting night. I continue to work on making the village a Purple Heart community, I've had several conversations with them, and we're just looking for a date. On the elevator for the Cultural Arts Center, the, we have a meeting set for June 10th, you've got that in your book?
June 17.
June 17.
Yes.
Okay. That's, and so the architects are coming now, we've been assured of $100,000 grant to pay for the architectural drawings at least, and they're going to look at it again, and they're going to bring some ideas and thoughts and stuff to the, to the table to look at, and then we only need probably another $500,000, but we'll find that somewhere. We're looking for grants. We're buying, we're going to buy the five and a half acres on the west side of I-75, which used to be the flyway for the Newman Way up there, and part of that is in the Village of Woodlon, or Lincoln Heights. I had a discussion with the mayor of Lincoln Heights today, and I said we'd get back to, it's only two tenths of an acre, and this is five and a half acres, so I think that we'll work that out. And the Sharon Creek restoration is supposed to start, Mr. Jeffers, please.
21st.
21st of June. I think it's going to be quite extensive, from what I see the drawings, they're pretty into it, and our poor friends at Norwood Hardware have to go through more stuff up there. But it's basically on the Warm Beer property to the north of Norwood Hardware. And if you've been back there, the Warm Beer property is very cleaned up and nice, Mr. Warm Beer's done a great job on it, but Sharon, Sharon Creek, they've got a grant from Clean Ohio to clean it up and make it look better as we go forward. And that's the extent of my remarks, if anybody has any questions.
Mayor, I just wanted to bring up, we had a resident pass away this week, Father Wyson.
Yes.
Passed away over at St. Rita's, he had been working at St. Rita's for 47 years, I think, and he was a, he was definitely a friend of Evendale.
Definitely a friend. He opened the many a town meeting for us, and many events here in the Village of Evendale, and we'll really say it to his, to his passing, he had been ill for some time, and we'll see. He used to take care of the racing dogs, the gray animals, after they were done racing, they got rid of them, killing them. So he used to take two and three in a year, and he'd only live five or six years after he got them, but he used to take care of them. Pretty good, pretty good dogs, he said, pretty nice dogs. Okay, that's the extent of my remarks, and we'll go then to the ordinances. Ordinance, we have ordinance 2115, I'd like permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Auburn.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
An ordinance repealing Chapter 1442 of the Evendale Code of Ordinances in its entirety and adopting a new permit fee table. This is the third reading, and I'd like a motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Auburn.
Yes.
And I declare ordinance 2115 adopted. Next, we have ordinance 2130. This, I would, the suggestion of our law director, we're going to table this motion at the present time, and we're going to follow with another motion, which we're then probably going to go with some additional readings, but I'd like a motion to table 21-30.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Auburn.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Okay, next we have 21-31, and I'd like to read the ordinance by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Auburn.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
An ordinance amending Section 251.120 Sickleaf subsection parentheses F, close parentheses, and declaring it as an emergency. Now, I'm not sure we're settled on this, or whether we're not settled on this or not. Does anyone have any questions about it?
No, just the, the new one that Tim put out seems to be, it's simpler, a lot simpler than the other one.
And it replaces.
Right. Yeah, it seems, it just seems to be, you know, more straightforward.
Yeah, it reads better. I thought it read better, more clearer.
Okay. So everybody's comfortable with it?
Yes.
Then I'd like a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Auburn.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Auburn.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
No.
Can I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Auburn.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
No.
I now declare ordinance 21-31 adopted as an emergency. Next, we have ordinance 21-32, I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Auburn.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Ohio Plan Risk Management Inc. to provide property and liability insurance with the assistance of Highland Administrative Services for the Village of Evendale and declaring it as an emergency. Mr. Elmer, you want to just tell a little bit about it?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So every year, our property and liability insurance is up for renewal. This obviously covers things such as our inventory and our liability for any suits or claims that may be levied against us. I'm pleased to report that the, that the premium for this year's plan is actually about $1,700 less than last year, so we're just slightly over $85,000 for the renewal, and we did not change anything about the plan design, so all the deductibles, everything else essentially remained the same. So I've got the entire plan design, if any of you ever want to review it at any time.
Any questions? If not, can I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Auburn.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Auburn.
Yes.
And I declare ordinance 21-32 adopted as an emergency. Next, I have ordinance 21-33, and I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Auburn.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
An ordinance approving an additional appropriation in the law enforcement trust fund and declaring it as an emergency. I believe this is for a computer service that our IT professional has suggested through the police department.
It's, it's for two things, Mayor, and it is for a server. Mr. Jeffers and Mr. Meckley were kind enough to include us when the traffic project came through, so we have 16 cameras that cover I-75 in the intersections that are normally controlled by the state, still controlled by the state, but we have access to them. So this will allow us to view those traffic camera servers, which help us immensely when we're dealing with crashes. Small part of it is for flashlights for our patrol rifles, I think 12, 1,300 of the total amount, and that's what they're, that's what they're for.
Any questions? Thank you, Chief. I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Auburn.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
And I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Auburn.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Auburn.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
And I declare ordinance 21-33 adopted as an emergency. Ordinance 21-34, I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Auburn.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
An ordinance approving transfer from the contingency fund to the Community Environment Department and declaring it as an emergency. This is for the, the charging stations, the two electric charging stations we want to put on the campus. State, it will, we have to upfront the money, but the state will, I think the EPA, am I correct, will reimburse us for most of the cost, but much of the extra cost will be the result of labor performed by our service department, and I don't think we'll have too much of out-of-pocket expense. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Auburn.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Auburn.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Auburn.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
And I declare ordinance 21-34 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 21-35, I'd like permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Auburn.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
A motion, ordinance authorizing the mayor to hire seasonal employees for the Recreation Department and declaring it as an emergency. I'd like a motion to suspend the second and third reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Auburn.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
I'd like a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Auburn.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 21-35 adopted as an emergency. Next, we have ordinance 21-36, and I'd like permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Auburn.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ordinance approving water management and sedimentation control plans for the Mill Creek Alliance for the Sharon Creek Confluence Restoration Project and authorizing the building commissioner to issue permit and declare it as an emergency. This is the -- what I talked about earlier about the restoration project. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Elmer?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Elmer?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 21-36 adopted as an emergency. Next is 21-38, and I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Elmer?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Elmer?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 21-36 adopted as an emergency. Next is 21-38, and I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Elmer?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
An ordinance approving a transfer from the contingency fund to the building maintenance department and declaring it as an emergency. This is a new HVAC system on top of the recreation center that cools the racquetball courts at the Lee. Correct. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Elmer?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Elmer?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Elmer?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Elmer?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
He used to take care of the racing dogs, the grayhounds. After they were done racing, they got rid of them and killed them. So, he used to take two and three in a year. And he'd only live five or six years after he got them. But he used to take care of pretty good dogs, he said. Pretty nice dogs.
Okay. That's the extent of my remarks. And we'll go then to the ordinances. Ordinance, we have ordinance 2115. I'd like permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Elmer?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
An ordinance repealing Chapter 1442 of the Evendale Code of Ordinances in its entirety and adopting a new permit fee table. This is the third reading. I'd like a motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Elmer?
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 Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 21-38 adopted as an emergency.
Anyone in the audience have any comments or discussions? Please come forward.
I'm a resident here in Evendale.
Could you state your name and address?
I'm sorry?
Name and address.
Steve Aylers. I'm on Margate, 10544. And I've been thinking about legislation that's proposed up in Columbus. There's some bills that are in process up there that would allow employees who don't work nor live in a given village or city or, you know, to be subject to that jurisdiction's taxes. So, I just didn't know if there's been any discussion or conversation or thought about going forward, what that legislation might mean for Evendale in terms of income tax revenue.
Well, it would be a disaster for Evendale. Because we have a lot of people who don't live in -- we have 2,800 people that live in Evendale and 25,000 who work here. So, we have a lot more that don't live in the village of Evendale. We've been very aware of the ordinance or the bill going through the Ohio General Assembly. There's a couple of bills, one in the House, which is already passed in the House, one in the Senate, which is different, a little different from the House bill. I suspect it'll get rolled together and if they're not going to pass. We've been in touch with our legislative people, Jessica Miranda and Senator Blessing, our displeasure with the bills. We have support at the Ohio Municipal League. Mr. Elmer went to Columbus and testified in opposition to the bills on one occasion. I have authored a letter, which was sent to the committee chair and was read by, or in part by, the member of the Ohio Municipal League as against the bill. Had a call from the other, two days ago, from Mayor Cranley, from the city of Cincinnati. He continues to be concerned about them with the passage of the bill. But the members of the General Assembly don't seem to be listening very well to us, frankly. And I'm not sure, not only are we concerned about the future going forward, but this has a retroactive clause in which they can come back and reclaim funds from the village of Evendale. And that would be even more of a disaster for us if that were to occur. We were able to get it that you can't claim funds for 2021. But I think they can claim them for 2022, am I correct? They could claim them for 2022.
I think it's 2020, then 2021.
2021. So, they could, I mean, conceivably, four or five years down the pike, say, "Oh, I want to refund the taxes that I paid to the village of Evendale." So, we're extremely concerned about them. Our financial situation isn't the best right now because up to 30% of GE has been fired or laid off. And we're hoping for some of that to be a resurgence. That's why we have Arrow Hub going and places like trying to build new businesses. But, and like GE tells us, that they're bringing people back slow but sure in the situation. And a lot of companies have been working mainly at home. Connecticut Vision, I know 80% of their people were working at home. And now they're beginning to bring the people back to their companies. So, we'll see what happens, but that's why we're down $500,000 for the first quarter of this year. But we've tried our best to get on them about it. Mayor Cranley is working with the police and fire departments in this city because they could be very well affected by this bill and that they would have to lay people off. Unfortunately, because the city of Cincinnati gets money from the American Rescue Plan, they get millions. We get $250,000 about. And so, that doesn't cut it for us. But we're very well aware of it. We're trying our best.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Tom, you're just observing tonight. Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Elmer?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Counsel's adjournment.